Minutes late. I will stand at ease until the Vice Mayor makes down, actually. She said standing, we will go forward with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. We ask everyone to stand if they're able and ready.
Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you today. It is a day that we have not seen, and it is only by your grace and mercy that we are here. We thank you, Lord, for our health and strength and for watching over us last night, allowing us to get up fully clothed and in our right minds. Father, we lift you up. We lift up to you, the city of Wichita, and we praise you for your divine healing has come. We praise you for the percentages of new deaths from COVID-19 remain at zero percent. Today, we lift up to you Mayor Brandon Whipple and the city council leaders. We pray that they work together with all integrity as they serve our communities. Search now their hearts, Lord, and remove all bitterness and anger and unforgiveness from them so that they may effectively serve our communities. Bless and protect them and their families from all evil. Father, place a hedge protection around our police chief Gordon Ramsey, our police officers and their families, and also our medical teams as they put their lives on the line to keep our community safe. Father, we thank you that our city is reopening. We pray that every business, every business leader, as well as our church leaders recover in Jesus' mighty name. We pray for a hedge protection around our children, our youth, and the graduating class of 2021 as they prepare for the summer break. Now, Lord, help us to remember the less fortunate, the poor, and the homeless. In Jesus' mighty name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk.
On May 4th, 2021.
If you remember a chance to review the minutes. Is there any discussion on the minutes? If there is no discussion on the minutes, then I will make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Motion has been made in the second about the Vice Mayor. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. The result of six yays to zero nays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Proclamation, National Nurse Week.
Would anybody who is here to receive the proclamation for National Nurse Week please make your way to the front? All right, so proclamation of the city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas Nurses Day provides an important opportunity to recognize the more than 10,000 Wichita nurses who work diligently on the front lines to provide effective, safe, dependable, and high-quality health care to citizens of our city. Whereas nurses play an integral role in our health care system, and they have been nationally recognized as one of the most trusted health care professionals. Whereas the role of the nurse can range from direct patient care and case management to establishing nurse practice standards and directing complex nursing care systems. And whereas now, more than ever, it is important to recognize and support nurses' steadfast commitment to meeting the needs of patients and communities every day. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the city of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim May 6 through the 12th, 2021, as National Nurses Week. And the city of Wichita encourage to recognize the countless contributions nurses have made and will continue to make to the health and well-being of citizens in our city. Do you want to say anything?
It's a special day, vigil of Florence Night Gill's birthday, and we'll be having a dinner tonight with the state office and the hundredth anniversary of the local nurses' chapter, and we're very happy we've been here that many years and look forward to and thank everyone that's supported us through this COVID and the work energies that have had to go into all kinds of things to help the health of public health.
Law Week.
Law Week. Is Jennifer going to pick this one up, or do we have anyone here to receive the proclamation for Law Week? Please make your way forward. The mask on, I can't tell if they're laughing over there or not, so, sir, welcome. Proclamation of the city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas our legal institutions and system of justice depend on popular participation and support to maintain legitimate authority. And whereas Americans from all walks of life, public figures and private individuals alike have reaffirmed the words and deeds of our nation's, our national allegiance to the rule of law. And whereas Law Day has been an annual observance since President Dwight Eisenhower established it in 1958 as, quote, "a time of national dedication to the principle of government under the law," and is celebrated nationally on May 1st. And whereas the American Bar Association has designated the 2021 Law Day theme to be "Advancing the Rule of Law Now," to remind all of us that we, the people, share the responsibility to promote the rule of law, defend liberty, and pursue justice. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the city of Wichita, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim May 9 through the 15th as National, as Law Week. And the city of Wichita and encourage all citizens to acknowledge the importance of our legal and judicial systems with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and to join members of the bar and bench in commemorating Law Week.
Thank you, Mayor Whipple, and to the entire city council. We appreciate that you found it appropriate to acknowledge that this week is Law Week. And the theme of 2021 is Advancing the Rule of Law Now. And certainly, as we have gone through these tumultuous times through looking at COVID, the pandemic, and the things that have happened across the nation and our political spectrum, I am so glad to live in a city where we have a group of people that understand that the laws apply to everyone and that we are working together as a community to make sure that everyone receives the protection of the law. I'm so grateful for the thought that the city council had to acknowledge Law Week. We're celebrating today as the Wichita Bar Association. And I pledge to you, as the president of the Wichita Bar, that we, as attorneys in this community, will work together to find the best way to advance the rule of law for all of the citizens, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here and for this recognition that you've given us today. Thank you.
We might have to put a coffee bar out front here to help encourage folks to have the energy to clap and so on, so Dante, go ahead and write that down if you don't mind. All right, Madam Clerk.
Facility Management Day.
Facility Management Day. Is there anyone here to receive the proclamation for Facility Management Day? Morning, welcome. Proclamation of the city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas World Facility Management Day aims to recognize the efforts of the facility management professionals everywhere. The facility management professionals influence the health, safety, productivity, and well-being of people who utilize the built environment. Whereas Kansas facilities management professionals build, support, and maintain facilities in such sectors as industrial, as medical, production, food supply, office buildings, transportation, education, financial, and real estate, keeping these businesses open and producing. Whereas the Wichita chapter of IFMA has assisted Wichita State University with adding a degree emphasis in facilities management, and increased awareness will benefit Wichita State University and the local FM workforce. Whereas since COVID-19 arrived in Kansas, our facility management professionals, whether government or private sector, improvised to keep our facilities open and maintained in a safe manner. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the city of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim May 12th, 2021, as Facility Management Day.
This is a little bit different world for me, so. Thank you, Mayor Whipple. And first, I'd like to recognize, we do have some facility managers in here from some companies locally. We have Joel Elsia with Curo Financial, Bobby McCurry with Cargill, Crystal Stegman with WSU, and Damon Young with Mahaney, and my name is Susan Lutz with Commerce Construction. Facility Management, the Wichita chapter of IFMA, International Facility Management, our mission is to be the recognized champion in South Central Kansas for the advancement of all built environment professionals. IFMA Wichita is proud of all those locally and worldwide working in the facility management profession and industry, and for their efforts that have allowed business, governments, and societies to continue to operate as efficiently and effectively as possible and to have circumstances have permitted. Because of their typical covert but critical work, it is important for these FM professionals to be recognized with their own day, May 12th, 21, being World FM Day. Thank you, Mayor Whipple, for this proclamation. And here locally, we have educational programs. June is going to be on roofing systems for commercial buildings, and over the summer we're going to have some facility tours, so you are all welcome to join us. Thank you again, Mayor and city council.
Madam Clerk. Excuse me, we have someone on the board. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. If I could just take a point of privilege, I know normally we make comments at the end, but our very own Jennifer Magagna, our city attorney, may have to leave us before we get to that point, but I did want to recognize that not only did we have the proclamation today regarding Law Week, but Jennifer is also receiving the president's award from the Wichita Bar Association. So just kudos to Jennifer for all you do and the wonderful guidance that you give us for our city. So thank you and congratulations.
Madam Clerk.
Celeste Rosette, privatization of the Wichita Ice Rink.
We're being on a public agenda. For those who are on a public agenda, please, if you are comfortable, state your full name, your address for the record, and try to keep it within five minutes if possible. Ma'am, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor Whipple and city council members. My name is Celeste Rosette. When I heard Century 2 was going to be privately managed, I wondered what this meant. A public building is owned by taxpayers and managed by city employees. So what would happen when a private for-profit company took over management? Who would prevent a private company from cutting corners and shirking their duty to maintain the building? Here's my concerns. First, how would the city enforce contract terms? Would there be clawbacks in the contract in case the private company failed to meet the terms? What about accountability? Would the city monitor revenues and expenses for timeliness and accuracy? Second, how would the public building be treated? I learned through Kansas Open Records Act requests and an interview with the city manager that maintenance on Century 2 has been neglected for over 12 years. So if the city isn't taking care of public buildings, how could we expect a private company to do better? Who would be responsible for verifying repairs were made? And what would you do if citizens complained about the rundown state of a public building being managed by a private for-profit company? Would you do anything? Third, what guarantees do citizens have that private management of public buildings like Century 2 was not a way for the city to keep citizens away? If the city manager lets a private company run down our unique landmark public buildings, how do we stop him? To address my concerns, I looked at a public building under private management, the Wichita Ice Rink Center, and it's not good. The Ice Rink Center was built in 1996 for the citizens of Wichita. It is a public building owned by the taxpayers. It is not a private facility. The Ice Rink provides skating lessons, figure skating, speed skating, and hockey. In March 2011, the city entered into a management agreement with Genesis Health Club Management, LLC. The city issued $750,000 in 10-year general obligation bonds to upgrade a fitness space on the second floor of the Ice Rink, and Genesis owner Rodney Stephen was to make regular payments on these bonds, principal and interest, and pay them off in 10 years. Genesis was to operate and maintain the facility and hire staff, including a manager. I toured the Ice Rink Center on February 12th of this year. There were burned-out light bulbs, broken scoreboards, holes in the wall, mold on the walls, plywood on the floor, and a broken Zamboni. The pro shop was practically empty, but general manager Brian Goff assured me a new shipment of merchandise was coming. Genesis still owes money on the $750,000 debt for building the fitness center and the Ice Rink Center. The bonds were issued nearly 10 years ago, so why is there any amount still owed? I returned to the facility just last week. There was still plywood on the floor, mold on the walls, burned-out light bulbs, and an empty pro shop. When I asked general manager Brian Goff why repairs hadn't been made in the months since I last visited, he blamed you all, the city. He said the city had to approve repairs over 2,500, so I called the city. I was told there were no repair requests for Genesis. The city then sent me the section of the contract which states Genesis has to make maintenance repairs. So now there is a blame game going between the city and Genesis about who is really responsible for the public building. The Ice Rink folks have been asking someone from the city, including you all, to step in and stop the deterioration of the building, and yet nothing has changed. So why would anyone trust you to give management a Century 2 to a private group? I'm asking today, who is responsible for enforcing city contracts? City manager Layton and Scott Rigby from Economic Development, or city manager Layton and Scott Lewis from Properties? Genesis has hired poor management staff, has a problem with unpaid bills, and yet you're letting them charge for parking for ball stadium games? Is this a new way to pay off the debt on building the Genesis Gym upstairs? If you cannot afford to take care of public buildings, please own up to it. I have no doubt that our city finances are strained to cover the new ballpark debt payments. I've asked you before how you plan to pay the $2 million debt payments on Star Bonds issued to pay for the stadium, and I appeared before you in January 2020 to say the ballpark, the ball stadium parking was inadequate, but former Mayor Longwell assured me you had it covered. So is parking at the Ice Rink Center the new plan for parking for the ball stadium? If we don't keep our public buildings like the Wichita Ice Rink in good condition, then visitors who come to play won't come back. I thought we wanted visitors to return. Isn't that the goal of Visit Wichita, who has a budget of over $5 million? I thought we wanted to show pride in our city. I thought you cared. I'll stand for questions. See none, thank you.
See none, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Jolene Taylor, Wichita Ice Center Management.
Welcome.
Good morning. I'm Jolene Taylor. I live in East Wichita. Approximately 10 years ago, several of us in the skating community expressed concerns regarding the proposed management of the Wichita Ice Center by Genesis Health Clubs. Since then, the figure skating program has suffered greatly, and much of the building has been neglected. The chillers completely failed and needed to be replaced. This took several months and was a great cost to the city. Multiple general managers have come and gone. Membership in the Wichita Figure Skating Club has decreased by more than 50% pre-COVID, and we are without a much-needed skating director. Genesis implemented an unrealistic payment structure that takes around 50% of a coach's private lesson fee, causing our experienced coaches to leave Wichita and preventing qualified coaches from coming here. Many times, we have pleaded with Genesis to change this, to be more in line with other ice rinks in the Midwest, without success. This has caused our skaters to seek lessons in other cities. Years ago, standing here, we expressed our goals to host large figure skating events using both the Wichita Ice Center and Intrust Bank Arena. Since then, we have teamed up with the Wichita Sports Commission and Visit Wichita to host the largest competition United States figure skating has, bringing thousands of skaters and their families to Wichita, and we have been awarded another very large national competition to occur in the near future. These competitions have brought millions of dollars to the city and have put Wichita into the spotlight as a potential host city for Skate America and the United States Figure Skating Championships, both televised events. But we cannot host these events if our figure skating club is not strong, if we do not have a Zamboni that works, or if routine maintenance is ignored. Imagine the embarrassment we felt while doing a walkthrough of the Ice Center with representatives of United States figure skating and finding mold on the walls. We need a management that cares about the facility and works with its user groups. In January of 2020, while we were hosting the Synchronized Skating Sectional Championships, two teams of approximately 20 skaters were kicked out of their warm-up room at the Wichita Ice Center by Genesis Management so one person could take a yoga class. Some of these teams came from as far as California. As we all know, there are multiple Genesis Health Clubs in town at which a person can take a yoga class, but only one facility to host a skating competition. This occurred despite the fact that we had a contract stating this space was going to be used for this event. Good management would have been happy to work with us for that one week, considering the event made the Ice Center thousands of dollars. No one disputes that Genesis can manage a health club, but this has not been the case when it comes to the Ice Center. It has been made clear to us over and over that management only cares about the health club upstairs. The Wichita Ice Center has the potential to be one of the best rinks in the country. Our skaters should not be going out of town for lessons, and those that remain here for lessons should not be paying top dollar for entry-level lessons based upon a health club pay structure that does not work in figure skating. Please do not let Genesis manage this facility any longer. 10 years has been long enough. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
See none.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Tammy Joseph, Wichita Ice Center Management.
Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. My name is Tammy Joseph. I am the president of the Wichita Figure Skating Club. I am also a mom of a figure skater. My daughter has skated and competed for 15 years. She now coaches, teaches Learn to Skate, and skates with Disney on Ice. We've seen and experienced the changes at the Wichita Ice Center firsthand, six general managers and six figure skating directors. When she first started skating, the rink and its programs were flourishing. The Figure Skating Club had approximately 150 members. The rink was in great condition. Learn to Skate had around 250 students. There were about 15 private coaches, and there were community members there all the time for hockey, figure skating, speed skating, and public skating. The pro shop was stocked with all things skating, hockey and figure skating. There were items on consignment as well as new inventory. The management worked hard to market the rink and all the programs it offered to area schools and to the general public. They also generated revenue when one sheet of ice was down each summer through a Learn to Ride Bike program and occasionally roller derby. This brought in new people all of the time. This environment lasted for the first five years my daughter skated, then management changed. Over the last 10 years, we've witnessed a sharp decline in the programs offered, club membership, Learn to Skate students, and the number of coaches. We are now at four adult coaches, two of which are college students who grew up skating and competing here. This decline in coaches is a direct result of the Genesis Management's coaching pay scale that they implemented. They made up their own levels of coaches that are not in accordance with the Professional Skaters Association or United States Figure Skating recommendations. By removing coaches as 1099 contractors and deciding on their level and therefore their lesson rate, of which Genesis retains anywhere from 40 to 55%, they've forced many higher-level coaches to leave and skaters to follow. Our skaters are traveling to Oklahoma City, Michigan, Colorado, Tulsa, Dallas, Kansas City to work with their coaches. Even after receiving a letter from United States Figure Skating explaining best practices for coaches used all across the country, Genesis ignored their suggestions. The facility itself has also declined. Routine maintenance is ignored, and minuscule amounts of marketing of programs are offered in direct opposition of what's stated and expected in the contract between Genesis and the city of Wichita. Even the Parks and Rec website doesn't list the programs offered at the Ice Center, let alone the digital billboard on Kellogg. It always promotes the programs Genesis offers at the rink and at their 13th and Rock location. In addition, other areas have suffered because of delinquent or delayed payments. Vendors no longer have relationships with the pro shop, leaving it practically void of figure skating and hockey equipment. This also applies to the party packages at the rink. Some local restaurants will no longer work with the Ice Center because of lack of payments. The skate sharpener is old and outdated. Skaters have to go to Kansas City to get skates sharpened because the machine here hasn't been updated with new bits to accommodate sharpening the new types of blades. Also, the staff isn't trained correctly on how to sharpen figure skating blades. This has resulted in several skaters' blades being ruined at the cost of around $700 for a set of blades. The Wichita Ice Center was and can be again a premier location for ice sports. We have the opportunity to make it a beacon in the region again and attract high-visibility events with Visit Wichita and United States Figure Skating. We need a management group that has specific experience with ice rink management, program development, coaching, and the marketing of the activities available and of the facility itself. Thank you. Take any questions?
See none. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Sybil Strum, where are my missing items?
My name is Sybil Strum. I reside at 326 North One. How's the weather? And how's it in your house? First, I'd like to say, I, in my house, it's freezing. The heater don't work. The house you gave me doesn't have storm windows. Now, we're going to get to the missing part. When you all decide, not Mayor Whipple, you're okay, but when the others decided to tear down the house, I did not get that memo. And I want to know where all my stuff went. The two contractors, one was called Stringer and Sons from Whitewater, Kansas. Why didn't we hire a person from Wichita, Kansas? That I'd like to know too. But where is my Victorian tub? I keep coming up here to the podium, asking, where is my Victorian tub? Do you know how much a Victorian tub costs? $2,468. Well, nobody told me. And I had storm doors on my old house. Where did they go? Did they get trashed? I don't know. I don't know. I was bullied into signing a contract to tear down the house. I was told that I'd be homeless. That's not what our community is supposed to be. It's supposed to be compassionate, not a meeting, a bully. And where did my granite counter go that was on my countertop? I was also, I don't, I did not like that the city had the central come over to my house when I didn't even know about it and bully me by telling my neighbor where, "I'm not going to tell you who I am." He asked him, "Well, I'm the neighborhood watch. I want to know where, who you are." And he said, "No, I'm going to tear this house down. And I don't care who cares." That's another thing I want to know. How did the central get off being bullies? And how did the housing authority take control of my house and tell me to get their contractor? And then they make me do a loan, and I've been paying that loan for a long time. What is it about this city? Do you not want old houses up? But that's a different thing. I also want to know where my flags went that I had. I'm a patriotic person, yes. There was so much wrong with that whole thing. I drove by with my daughter, and she was like crying because she was born in that house. She said, "Why? Why couldn't they just remodel it like the Dodge House? Did you know that Dodge House in 1800 was a whorehouse? If you didn't know, it's true." And then the Dodge House became a place for child molesters that got out of jail. What a way to go. I was a law-abiding citizen, but I was told, "Get the heck, you know, we're going to tear your house down." That's like the little pig story. Little piggy, little piggy, let me in, not by the hair of my chinny chin chin. Well, I'm a huffin', I'm a puffin', I'm blowing your house down. Well, I want to know, where is my stuff? Did they trash it? They had no right. They should have called me. They knew where I was. I have actually had help from Brandon Johnson. I'm going to give him a shout-out. He has helped me many times. I said to him, I go, "What's going on? Why am I being picked on? I've been there for the community. I've done teaching for the community. I've done runaways that came to my house just to get out of the condition they were in. But I've been treated like nothing. I'm a nobody. I want to be, I want you to know, I am a somebody. I am highly intelligent. I never went to college, but I know the ropes. So let's just find out where that stuff went, please. I urge you to tell me. And who's going to pay for that Victorian tub? The housing authority or the city, the central? I guess it's going to be the housing authority and the city, the central. They need to pay me for that tub. I had offers on that tub, you won't believe it. I had a lady across the street, her name was Mrs. Bush, and she said, "I'll give you $2,468 for it," but I loved it. I mean, it was a 1900 tub. Where is my stuff? Stop being mean to people. This is not right. I can't stand being in Wichita anymore. You guys drove me to where I don't want to be here. I tell my-
Sybil, your time is up. Can you complete your thought?
Relatives should not come here because it's not been a good thing. And it seems like every time I come up to the podium, you guys get that timer really going. But when you see people that do three-pagers or four-pagers, you give them a lot of time. So start giving me some more time. I'm not begging for stuff. I want answers. Thank you.
My apologies. I don't, I have to keep the meeting going. Just for the folks who are speaking, you have five minutes, as was announced in the beginning, and I will usually let it go an extra minute or so if you're in the middle of a thought. My goal is to hear everyone, but I have to balance that with obviously making sure that we are courteous to the next people who will be speaking. So apologies to you, Sybil. I meant no disrespect. Madam Clerk?
Laura Lombard, Wichita Adjustment Climate Change.
Lombard, I am upset that you didn't bring your partner today, but you're a little guy-
I'm sorry. I'll bring him next time.
Next time. I can't wait.
Yep, well, we'll maybe have a playdate with your kids one of these days.
I don't know if this place can handle my kids here, but yes.
Fair enough. Sounds good. Well, good morning. Good morning, Mayor Whipple and to the council members. My name is Laura Lombard. I think most of you know me already, but I live in Riverside at 753 North Woodrow Avenue. Today, I am here to talk, you've been hearing a lot about the sustainability plan that I and others have been advocating for over the last several months. I'm here on a related matter. What I'm going to talk about today could be part of a sustainability plan. It should be, frankly, part of a sustainability plan. But really, what I'm talking about today is economic development. I would love to see the city really starting to plan how we can capture more clean energy and clean technology companies to come here. Some of the discussions I've been having with youth in our area, I'm finding more and more that they're planning to leave because Wichita really isn't attracting those types of opportunities for their potential job growth down the road. In fact, about two weeks ago, I was having a conversation with a young lady from East High, and at first, I was shocked when she said, "It's never occurred to me to stay in Wichita. None of my friends are going to stay." But then I thought about it for a minute, and I realized, this isn't a new problem. This isn't a new thing. My class was the same way. We all left after high school or college. I'm one of the few that came back. So as we're thinking about sustainability holistically, part of that is ensuring that we give opportunities for our youth and for our talent to really stay here. And that's one of the things I want us to be thinking about. And that's really my ask today, is that as a city, we're creating more plans around that. Also, this is a great time to do this with the new Biden administration. We'll see if they get the $2 trillion plan through, the Americans Job Plan. May or may not actually happen, but what we do know regardless of that is that clean energy is the most up-and-coming sector in our country. And I would love, love to see us really start creating a plan around attracting those types of companies here. You all have already created some really great incentive plans for companies. I was looking at those in preparation for coming here today. I think, at first, I was going to ask that maybe we look at creating some new incentives, but I actually think that some of the ones that we currently have, for instance, the opportunity zones, maybe we look at structures like that and maybe create one that is specific for clean energy companies. So I don't think we have to recreate or invent new wheels. We can use the ones that we have that already exist. But really, creating that plan around how do we get these companies here? How do we create more jobs? And these are jobs that are going to be around for decades to come. Wichita has in the past been really known for our innovation. The aviation sector, of course, is our shining moment in that regard. And I think we could be that way here as well, and I would love to see us do that. I'll keep it short today, but I just wanted to put that out and put that buzz in your ear. And really, my ask is just to think about what Wichita could be, not where it is today, but really creating that vision for where we could go in the future. Thank you very much. Happy to take any questions.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Hey, Laura.
Hi.
My quick question is, have you talked to any of these companies? I've had a few, I know some folks who work with some of these companies in California and other places. And one of the concerns they raised with me was the ongoing battle between some of our utility companies here in Kansas and the solar rates and paying back and all of that. Is that something you're hearing?
A little bit, although it seems like, based off of a lot of the great work that the Climate and Energy Project have done, and other in Sierra Club and whatnot, it seems like some of those battles are coming to an end, or at least have had more positive results, even if they're not fully over. So I think that's something we can highlight in the future, that, yes, that was true, and maybe there'll be some of that, but really, it's coming to where the Kansas Corporation Commission has really come on the right side of that. And also then highlighting on the opposite side, some of the really great aspects of coming here. We've got a great workforce, partly because of the aviation sector. So if you're looking at manufacturing, we've got great talent in the manufacturing sector. We've got a lot of land. We've got lower cost of living. We've got great educational and training programs here. I would love to see WSU Tech eventually look at maybe creating programs around clean energy and clean technology, those types of things. So we've got all of it. We have it. We just have to sell it and get those companies here. Thank you very much. Unless anyone else has a question?
See none.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Madam Clerk?
Consent Agenda items 1 through 19.
Does every member have a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there discussion on the consent agenda? Chair recognizes council member for I.
Thank you, Mayor. Due to a conflict of interest on item 13, I will be abstaining from the consent agenda vote.
Now, we've got to look to see what item 13 is. Vice Mayor Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. I don't want to pull this item. Just want to highlight item number seven. College Hill and Mac Adams will be getting new playground surfaces, both going from sand to engineered wood fiber. So that's exciting for both communities, having that happen.
Also, the grant application, we're highlighting some of the cool stuff on this in this consent agenda. The Department of Justice Protect Safe Neighborhoods Grant Program to Reduce Violence would have the potential to bring in $140,000 that I think we would split with Garden City and to help us out. So we got some really good stuff on this, on this consent agenda. Is there any more discussion about the consent agenda? If not, then I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made and then seconded. Clerk will open the roll. Members cast the vote. Result of five yeas to one abstain, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Reported Board of Bids and Contracts and WAA Board of Bids and Contracts dated May 10, 2021.
City Council, Hannah Lane, Department of Finance here for the May 10 Board of Bids. First engineering bid we have is Osage Park Tennis and Pickleball Courts, Multi-Con Incorporated for $173,176. Southwest Pump Station standby power generation, Don Lerner and Sons construction for $899,000. Paving Curtis Court Sand Crest Third Editions, Piercing Construction for $148,980.75. Manhole and inlet frames and covers, Neha Foundry Company Group 1, $9,725. Group 2, $14,084. Group 3, $39,960. Airport CCTV replacement, DG Investment and Intermediate Holdings, $76,039.40. This is a purchasing procurement website, as well as our current open request for proposals. That is a Board of Bids recommendations. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions of staff? Is there any input from the public? No input from the public? Discussion on the item? If there's no discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the reports, approve the contracts, and authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by the vice mayor. Clerk will open the roll. Result of six yeas to zero nays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
2020 Bike and Pedestrian Multimodal Accommodations.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. The item before you this morning is a request for funding for bike and pedestrian multimodal accommodations. The adopted capital improvement program includes multiple years of funding for bike and pedestrian multimodal accommodation improvements. Projects will be prioritized based on feedback from the Wichita Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Board and citizens, along with staff recommendations. Improvements will provide for modifications to pavement preservation projects, working in sync with our annual outsourced pavement preservation program. This will enhance the ability to street or right-of-way for multiple modes of transportation. Proposed improvements would include additional pavement markings, signage, access points, et cetera, to enhance the bike, pedestrian transit experience. So effectively, as we look at our annual program for resurfacing of streets, we also look at things like the Bicycle Master Plan, working closely with the Bike Pit Advisory Board to look for opportunities when we're going to be resurfacing a street, to maybe change lane configurations, add bike paths, whatever it might be, that meets all of our goals at the same time for multimodal. We do know, particularly with the funding that we're requesting approval of today, that will be utilized to develop a design concept for the first and second street crossings at I-135. These design concepts will identify geometric improvements to improve the safety of these two crossings for pedestrians and bicyclists. We're also looking at the Broadway Corridor, which is scheduled for resurfacing from 13th to 21st Street yet this year, and looking at past plans and future funding in the CIP, basically for the full Broadway Corridor from Central North. We think there's an opportunity to look at possibly converting that from the current four-lane to a three-lane with on-street bike lanes. So we'll be looking into that a lot more soon to see if that makes sense for the future. That is something that the Bike Pit Advisory Board, again, endorsed last night at their monthly meeting, including these first and second street crossings. Any remaining funds will be used on priority projects, again, primarily in support of the 2021, 2022 outsourced pavement preservation programs. Capital Improvement Program includes $150,000 in 2020, all of which staff is recommending for approval at this time. Staff recommends city council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, authorize necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none. Is there any input from public? See none. Bring the discussion back to the bench. Is there any discussion on the item? If there's no discussion on the item, then I will make the motion to take staff's recommended action to approve the budget, adopt the resolution, authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by the vice mayor. Clerk will open the roll. Result of six yeas, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Stormwater sewer extension petition at the southwest corner of 9th and Hillside.
Morning. Welcome.
Mayor and council members, Gary Jansen, again. The item before you is a proposed petition for stormwater sewer improvements southwest of the 9th, Street North, and Hillside intersection. So to orient you with the map that we're looking at will be the focus of this discussion. Hillside is on the right side. 9th Street is towards the top. The area you see in purple is the proposed improvement district that I'll talk more about in a moment. So the red lines and boxes that you see around the 9th and Hillside intersection are existing underground storm sewer. I'll show you a picture of that in just a moment. That same system continues to the bottom left of the screen. The bold red line you see going through the middle of the established area there with one business and some residential properties is an open channel. That is what the petition is for potentially, is to close up that channel, and I'll explain why in just a moment. But just to kind of give you some idea of what we're looking at here, that's the purpose of this project and the petition that is before you today. The reason why there's been a request to close this channel up is because a portion of the adjacent land outside of it is in the flood plain or the floodway. So not to bore you with a lot of flood map stuff, but just real quickly to explain what you're looking at here, the pink area is actual floodway. The blue area is 100-year floodplain, and the orange, I would call it, is a 500-year floodplain. So there are restrictions for building and development within floodplains, and there are absolute restrictions within a floodway, meaning that- are absolute restrictions within a floodway, meaning that nothing can be done within that pink area, no building whatsoever, no improvements, without trying to remove the area from the floodway itself and even the other areas. The goal is to remove them from the floodplain. We deal with those issues, starting with M A B C D, as far as issuing building permits. They will, they will, they will not allow building permits within that area. Working through the state and at the federal level with FEMA, these are rules that we have to follow, not just in this area, but across the city when we run into these types of issues. So the goal is to close up this channel. We expect that most of this area will be removed from the floodway for sure and potentially even from the floodplain, allowing for future development. So this is a picture on Ninth Street, looking back to the west. So the, the area in question is back over to the left of your screen, and I just wanted to show this box culvert right here that's, it's a closed section underneath the intersection, and it heads southwest from there. This is on the opposite end, on Mossman, looking back to the northeast, where you can see the open channel itself. That channel, again, as part of this project, would be proposed to be enclosed with a box culvert. All of that would be underground. Our expectation is that that would remove much of the land from the floodplain and the floodway, allowing for future development. So back to the same screen. A petition to enclose the open channel, signed by eighteen percent of the resident owners, representing fifty-point-three percent of the improvement district area, was submitted in support of the proposed improvements. So just as a quick reminder, by state statute, the petition is valid either by majority of resident owners or improvement district area, which is the case here. So the petition is valid per state statute. The proposed improvements will extend the existing underground storm sewer from approximately two-hundred feet southwest of Ninth and Hillside to just south of the Mossman and Chautauqua intersection that you see here, again with the bold red line. And again, the proposed improvements are being made to remove developable, developable land from the floodplain and the floodway. On May third, the District, Six, District One, I apologize, Advisory Board voted six to one to recommend approval of the project. So what you see in green here is the area that was signed for. All property owners were notified, and in fact, we did it two different times. This was initially taken to the District Advisory Board in April. Because we had not heard back from any of the other property owners, there was a decision made to notify everyone again, and we feel confident that everyone in the benefit district has received a proper notification and information on what their proposed assessment will be. Estimated project cost is just over one million dollars, which would be assessed to the benefit district area. The method of assessment is a square foot basis, and based on our current estimate is seven dollars and ninety-seven, six cents per square foot of ownership. Assessment does not include financing costs that will be incurred during designer construction or bonding phases of the project. Staff recommends City Council approve the project and petition, adopt the resolution, authorize necessary signatures. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
There are questions of staff? See none. Is there input from the public? Is there input from the public? No? Okay. Is there? See no input from the public. Discussion on the item from the bench? There is no discussion, then the Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Johnson as this item falls into District One.
Thank you, Mayor. As Gary said, extensive work was done by him and his team to notify folks, and two different times they were notified, and I believe seven of the nine people who received a certified letter signed that, so they are aware of this potential opportunity. So since the due diligence has been done, I would move that the City Council approve the project and petition, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
I'll second the motion. Clerk open to roll. Members cast the vote. Six yeas, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Water Protection Well Rehabilitation.
Good morning, sir. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Members of City Council. For the record, Don Henry, Public Works and Utilities. Item before you this morning involves critical work on the city's municipal water supply wells and the Equus Beds wellfield. The two major water sources are surface water from Cheney Reservoir and groundwater from the Equus Beds, as well as some additional supply that we have from the local wellfield down around the main water treatment plant. But the item does involve the seventy-five groundwater wells in the Equus Beds. Sixty-one of those have water rights associated with them. The other fourteen are associated with ASR production. As water wells are operated through time, they do lose efficiency in their pumping ability. What happens is, is the pump itself can lose efficiency, break down, and the interior of the well can become plugged up with mineral deposits, as well as sediment that accumulates in the well. And so we measure the pumping efficiency, and when it's time to work on a well, typically a company comes in with a workover rig, pulls the column pipe and pump, and then cleans the interior of the well, including chemical treatment and then physical brushing of the well screens to open up the well so that it's more productive, and then the pump is either repaired or rebuilt, reassembled, and then the well is disinfected with a chlorine solution before it's put back into service. And a pump test is ran before and after the operation to ensure that we're getting the, the efficiency recovery that we're looking for. You see the chart before you here, over the past two years, the outcomes on the work. In year 2019, Council authorized just over a million dollars to complete fourteen wells, and we experienced a seventy-seven percent recovery rate on average. Likewise, in 2020, we expended just short of a million dollars on twelve wells and recovered an eighty-nine percent efficiency. Just to give you some context to these numbers, kind of an industry standard or a target that we look for is fifty percent, fifty percent or better. And so these numbers are really remarkable and show that staff's doing a good job of running the proper analysis, applying the right techniques, and managing the contractor and hold their feet to the fire. In 2021, we plan to rehab twenty wells and re-drill three wells that are beyond their useful life. There's three-point-nine-two million included in the approved CIP. These funds have also been included in the most recent cost of service analysis and initiation of this project. Will have no further impact on rates. I'd like to go ahead and provide staff's recommendations at this time to approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. And I'll stand for any questions that you have at this time.
Questions from staff? See none. Input from the public? See none. Discussion back to the bench? Is there any discussion? There is no discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the project and, excuse me, to approve the budget, adopt the resolution, authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk open to roll. Members cast the vote. Result of six yeas, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Water Supply Rehabilitation Project, twenty-twenty-one.
And for the record, Don Henry, Public Works and Utilities. The item currently before you involves some critical work on our two main water transmission lines, one from the Equus Beds wellfield, the other from Cheney Reservoir. Each of the pipelines includes a number of access ports and manways. Imagine a short section of pipe off of the main pipe with a blind flange or a steel plate bolted to that, and it's important through time to monitor those and make sure that the integrity of that seal and that those structures maintain an acceptable condition to prevent leaks or sudden failures of the assets. Depending upon the location of the leak, they can be quite disruptive and expensive to repair, especially under emergency operations, as we experienced in 2016, a leak on the Equus Line. It occurred in the area of a weak field, and so property damage was, was minimal, but it did take some time and expense to address it in that fashion. You can see here that the map shows the Cheney Line coming in from the west and the Equus Line from the north, northwest, and you see that the line runs through both rural and urban environments. So depending upon the location of those, the failure, sudden failure of those can be quite disruptive, and so it's prudent at this time to get out in front of this and excavate the seventy-six flanges, inspect them, and do the necessary work. Quite a bit of work will be needed on the front end to develop the project approach. We'll have to go out and identify the exact location of the ports and manways, identify the property owners and work with them on the right approach for each one of these. And the idea there is to make sure that we optimize the costs and minimize disruption on the project. The currently adopted CIP includes one million dollars to fund this project. These, this project's also cost, has also been considered in the most recent cost of service analysis and initiation of this project. Will have no further impact on rates. At this time, I'd like to recommend the City Council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. I'll stand for any questions that you have at this time.
Questions of staff? Vice Mayor Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. I have, it's kind of a nerdy question, but after you find these, I think you said manways and the covers, how do you keep track of those? Do we put like a device on there that where in the future, if you need to come back, you know where it's at so you don't have to go find it, or?
Yeah, there's, there's a few ways that you can do it. One, you can do it, you know, with GIS, and you can mark an X-Y coordinate. You know, another way is through physical mapping. I think we'll work the details of that out. I think we know what the ideal would be, but we'll, we'll work the details of that out as we get this designed out. Thank you.
Further questions? There's no further questions or discussions. Input from the public? There is no input, further input, then I will?
Mayor.
Oh, there we go.
Just one question, Mayor Whipple and City Council. We all know that the water maintenance and the water line from Cheney to Wichita is an aging infrastructure that's going to cost millions of dollars. I heard him say that it might come out of rates, so when you approve the CIP, the capital improvement projects, please put documentation in that report as to whether it's going to impact water utility rates for citizens of Wichita. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle?
And maybe, Don, you can come back up, but I was making notes, and I put there's no impact on rates. Did I get that wrong?
It's included. Sorry.
Okay. So can you just reiterate? The notes that I took that you said there are no impact on rates for this? Is that correct?
That is correct. This project has been accounted for in the adopted CIP, in the cost of service analysis, and so there will be no additional impact on rates with initiation of this project.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Other discussion on this? Bring discussion back to the bench? Is there no other public discussion? If there's no discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the budget, adopt the resolution, authorize necessary signatures. For Chardon's Order 211, this item requires a two-thirds majority vote, which is five votes of this body. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk open to roll. Members cast the vote. Result of six yeas to zero nays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance amending Section 7.60.40 of the Code of the City of Wichita pertaining to tobacco.
Welcome and good morning.
I'm here today to present-
Chair, would you please just bring the microphone close to you? Perfect.
Never been told you couldn't hear me. I'm here today to present amendments to Section 7.60.040 regarding the sale and possession of tobacco and cigarette. In 2020, the city's tobacco ordinances were amended to comply with federal law and the age for purchasing and or possession of cigarettes and tobacco products was raised to twenty-one. Following this change, there was an unintended consequence that retailers did not have employees who were over twenty-one to sell all the products, so they expressed concerns about whether the age could be lowered to eighteen. The proposed ordinance do that. They would allow individuals eighteen or over to sell tobacco products at retail locations, and it's staff's recommendation that the ordinance be placed on first reading and that all necessary signatures are authorized. And I would stand for any questions.
Questions of staff? Councilmember Tuttle?
I don't, I don't have any questions of staff, I'm sorry, but I did want to point out that we do have our community partners from Tobacco Free Wichita here, Kim Neufeld and Shelley Rich. So if there are any questions from the bench, they would also be able to address it, but it's my understanding that you are also in support of this, that this really is an equity issue, that it's, it's making it so that eighteen to twenty-one-year-olds can't get gainful employment in places that sell tobacco. And so we do have some content experts in the staff, excuse me, in the audience from the community if we need any guidance. Thank you.
Excellent. We'll open up to the public. They can, they can speak if they wish. Councilmember Johnson, or, excuse me, Vice Mayor Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. No question. I just want to shout out my colleague, Councilmember Frye, for highlighting where this issue was and bringing that to my attention, and glad to support changing this ordinance to make sure that young people aren't punished at their jobs for not being able to sell tobacco.
Yeah, and I will just point out, this seemed to be an oversight in the original drafting that folks who are eighteen now can sell alcohol, and legally, they can sell cigarettes as well as alcohol as they work their job. This, however, the ordinance added a higher bar by making those folks twenty-one just to sell cigarettes. So this is correcting what was likely an oversight. We'll open up to the public if there's anyone who'd like to speak to this. See none? With that, if there's any further discussion at the bench? And I will defer the floor to Councilmember Frye for a motion as it was, him brought this up.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. And I do want to, want to thank the retailers that brought this to our attention. It was an unintended consequence, and the strain that it put on them and the, this crazy environment over the last year with workforce was unnecessary. So I'm glad that we can correct this action. With that, I make a motion that the City Council place the ordinance on first reading and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion's made and then seconded. Clerk open to roll. Members cast the vote. Result of six yeas, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Multimodal Center.
City Councilmembers. Paul Gunselman with Public Works Engineering. The item before you this morning is Design Services for the Multimodal Center. In November 2019, the City of Wichita received a Federal Transit Authority grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation to improve transportation service through a multimodal center. On December fifteenth, 2020, the City Council approved a budget for design, infrastructure, and utility work, construction of the center, and project management. The multimodal center is located just, the site for the multimodal center is just located just west of Riverfront Stadium, in an area bounded by Sycamore Street on the east, Oak Street on the west, Texas on the north side, and Burton on the south side. On January twenty-first, 2021, a request for qualifications was published for the design of the multimodal center. We received nine submittals for the project. On March eighth, 2021, a shortlist meeting was held, and the Staff Screen and Selection Committee selected four teams to interview. Interviews were held on March thirty-first, and the Staff Screen and Selection Committee selected transystems based on the following criteria: methodology and meeting scope of work, performance work statement requirements, proven successful contracts comparable in size and scope. They met all the requirements and instructions, submitting clear, detailed information and providing all requested documentation. Also, overall approach and presentation and emergency business enterprise, disadvantaged business enterprise goal. They met that. Proposed contract cost for Phase One is seven hundred and five thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. Funding is available within the $19,232,816 budget approved by city council on December 15th, 2020. Phase one will take the plans to 30% complete and will take approximately 13 weeks to get to that point. The recommended, recommended action is to approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures, and I will stand for questions.
Are there questions of staff? Is there input from the public?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear how much the grant was. I know it's a $19 million project, but how much is the grant that's helping with this cost?
14 million. It's a federal grant. Further comments from the public? Discussion from the bench? Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to highlight, this is great to be moving forward. There were some concerns about parking around the stadium. As this moves forward and comes to completion, there is more parking opportunity in the multimodal facility. And then also wanted to highlight, it's not on here today, as the development north of the stadium happens in the future, there will be more parking there, so we are not done with parking around the new stadium.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify some timing for the public, Paul. Phase one gets us to 30% design and that is expected to be done within 13 weeks. Yes. I know that this is a very lengthy project. It seems like it's taking forever, so I just wanted to kind of, again, stress the dates and the deliverables for the public, so.
Yes, so I anticipate having the 30% plans completed in August. And then 60% design completed late this year, December. And then early next spring, 90% design completed and with 100% contract documents in May. So a year from now.
Great, thank you.
Further discussion? If there's no further discussion, I will make the motion to take staff's recommended action to approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion has been made in the seconded. Clerk open a roll. Members cast the vote. Result of six yeas, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Code of Ethics.
Welcome, sir.
Good morning, Mayor, members of Wichita City Council. Assistant City Manager Dante Martin. And on behalf of City Manager Robert Layton, I am pleased to present the proposed City Council Code of Ethics. If you would, please allow me to begin by providing some background on the hard work that City Council and staff has completed during the past year. On June 20th, 2020, the City Council participated in an ethics retreat. During that retreat, they developed a description of ethical behavior and identified goals of a new code of ethics. The code would enhance public trust, establish guiding principles for appropriate conduct and improve consistency in ethics policy interpretation. Following the direction of the mayor and council, staff developed a draft code of ethics that was provided to council for review in preparation for, excuse me, January 26, 2021 ethics workshop. During the January 26 meeting, City Council provided feedback on the draft and additional items for research prior to the draft ethics code being presented at a March workshop. In addition, the National League of Cities was enlisted to review and make recommendations related to the draft code. NLC presented its recommendations to the council at the March 2 workshop. NLC feedback and recommendations included positive remarks on the inclusion of internal controls, training requirements, enforcement mechanisms and whistleblower protections in the proposed document. NLC recommended the ethics advisory board structure, social media guidelines, code of conduct guidelines and policy review processes be modified. These recommendations were considered and revisions were incorporated into a new draft document, which was reviewed by the City Council on April 27, 2021. The proposed, excuse me, the proposed code of ethics includes a purpose statement that indicates that city officials should honor the public trust and instill confidence in government by maintaining integrity. It includes definitions that identify the officials that are covered by the ethics code, helps clarify some of the more important issues addressed in the code. At the core of the code is a statement of policy that establishes expected behavior for the mayor, city council and advisory board members as they conduct city business. This statement of policy also addresses conflicts of interest, personal gain, undue influence and establishes limits for the acceptance of gifts. To assist with the interpretation of the code, an ethics advisory board is established, comprised of seven members appointed by the mayor and council. The board is responsible for investigation of allegations filed against officials for violations of the code. Processes for reporting and investigating allegations are addressed in the code as well as possible remedies. The code of ethics also provides whistleblower protections. Financial considerations. The adoption of the code of ethics and the creation of an ethics advisory board and ethics officer will have no impact on the city's operation, operating budget. If consultation services from an outside council are required, it is estimated that annual costs could range between $10,000 and $20,000, and those costs are covered in the city's operating budget. Legal considerations. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the proposed code of ethics. And lastly, staff recommendation. It is recommended that the City Council adopt the code of ethics for the mayor, city council and advisory board members of the city of Wichita. It's council policy number 38. I'm available for questions.
Questions of staff. See none? Let's go ahead and open up to discussion. The item, is there any input from the public? Welcome.
Welcome. Congratulations on a first step towards an ethics policy which is long overdue. You're making a first step and I hope this gets approved, but there are some minor modifications I want to point out for the future of this ethics policy. First of all, the financial cost was just set at $10,000 to $20,000, but you have to pay for an ethics officer. So you need to budget a reasonable salary for someone who's experienced in financial, accounting and legal considerations, so please make note, the cost is going to be more than that. Under item F, any conflicts of interest by refraining from participating in decisions which involve a business entity or a family. I would hope this would include development involving tax increment financing projects. G addresses constituents' concerns and needs. You heard today from three representatives, well, actually two, two representatives of the Wichita ice rink. They brought to you concerns and questions and they have brought those to you in the past. So I wonder if this is really something you're going to honor. I hope you do. It says you're going to strive to provide the highest level of service. I'm not seeing that right now, I'm hoping that we'll see that in the future. Item I says you will refrain from assisting or representing the private interests of another before or unduly influencing city staff. I would hope that would include presentations you post on wichita.gov where you're promoting a developer's TIF district. K says you will refrain from making any promise, private in nature, that would require the official to act beyond the proper scope of the duties of office. What about after that officer leaves? What if the former mayor decides he's going to throw out the first pitch at a ball stadium? Did he make a promise while he was in office? I would think you should consider whether that includes that official who doesn't get reelected if they've made promises to developers. Does that include that behavior? L says never use the information coming to an official confidentially for making a private profit. I would caution you that that should also extend to any of your friends who might benefit from, I call it insider trading, stock trading, by buying up land around the ball stadium to sell back at the city at double the price. How did they learn that that land was going to be for sale? If you've been given confidential information, that should not be given out to developers or your business friends and interests. The ethics officer needs to be independent and I don't see in here who they're reporting to for an annual review, but it needs to be beyond the city manager's purview. They need to be reporting to you so that their performance evaluation and annual review is not done by city manager, but is done through you all or another entity beyond city manager's control. And I would hope that at the same time you're approving this city council code of ethics, you would remember that you are currently in violation of several administrative regulations because you do not have an internal auditor. You have left that position unfilled and the oversight that position provides has not been met. Those are my comments on this proposed ethics policy. Thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we address one of those topics and Dante or anyone else can help clarify and make sure I'm getting this right because there's been several re- re- reiterations of this, but there isn't an actual hired ethics officer. The ethics officer is the chair of the ethics advisory board. So each of the seven of us will appoint one member of the ethics advisory board and the ethics advisory board, that seven-member board will appoint a chair that's the ethics officer. So there isn't going to be a position hired, so there isn't a need for budget for that. And they also will not be supervised by the city manager or by anyone else because it will be a voluntary, voluntary board. So if I'm not correct in any of that, please someone clarify, but that's my interpretation at this point. So just wanted to make sure that the speaker in the community were aware of that. Thank you.
That's a very good interpretation. I think that it's a point worth just making. The, the administrative side of our local government falls under a different ethics policy. This policy is for the policy side of our local government and thus does not have oversight, the city manager does not have oversight over this policy because it is solely over the, the policy side. So that there is no employee and there would be no concerns, I guess, of, of the manager having oversight over, over the officer. Further public comment?
Good morning, Mayor Whipple, council members. For the record, my name is Carl Peter John, and of course, as you all well know, I also had been a local official like yourselves, albeit across the street. And I'm here to speak because obviously ethics, and you deserve commendation for taking up this issue and trying to, it was an issue that I think struggles with not only here, but across the street, up in Topeka and of course nationally. But there were a couple of salient points that I'd like you to consider as you look at this policy going forward. And that is because at times, local officials here in Kansas have to serve as a quasi judicial body. And particularly in some difficult and challenging situations where you are in that quasi judicial role, I think it's particularly imperative that the ethics policy reflects that fact and also reflects at the state level, they have a requirement when the legislature is in session, that you cannot receive or solicit campaign donations during the legislative session. Of course, Mayor, having served in the legislature, you may know more of the details about this than I do, but I know that as an advocate for taxpayers for many years at the State House, that was one of the rules that's been in place for quite a while at the state level. And I think that that should be considered as part of this policy going forward because I could, I could cite an example from the city. I won't go into the details unless you want me to, where there were campaign donations sought and received by a member of this body, not current member, but in the past, and this receipt occurred while they were in a rather challenging and high-dollar contractual item that was before the council and also involved an election. Having said that, I think the best course that you can have is to do something and be flexible, to be able to look and revise and expand this as you discover the details. And I would urge you to look at the idea of restricting contributions politically so that it's quite clear that what you all are doing is looking at the public interest and avoiding any of the problems that occur for conflicts. And I appreciate Councilman Frye earlier today, you know, making the statement and, and because of that conflict, he stepped back from an item. And that can occur, especially because of the way the council's established at this point. You aren't full-time like, for instance, some folks like the mayor and county commissioners are. And so I wanted to commend you for going forward with this, but I think it needs some improvement and the devil's going to be in the details, obviously, but it's important that I think that you separate the campaign donations from council actions, particularly when you all are serving in a quasi judicial capacity. Mayor Whipple, members, appreciate your time. I'd stand for any questions. Thank you.
See none? Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of Wichita City Council. John Todd, 1559 North Payne here in Wichita, Kansas. First of all, I compliment you for moving forward with the ethics policy. I believe that this is the first step and it's a quality of life issue for the citizens of our communities who deserve fair and open transparent government. I might ask, ask you to add, I think there may be some need to, to also expand this to staff. I don't know whether this policy does or not, but if it doesn't, it needs to. And I would suggest that there be penalties added, the enforceable type penalty, penalties so that, so that if there are violations, basically they are dealt with. Compliments. I stand for questions. Have a good day. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Mr. Whipple. Sorry. Always appreciate your comments and feedback. There is a code of ethics for staff already and so this is separate from that, but there is a code of ethics that I think was reviewed last year or maybe the year before. So it's something that's not just on a shelf. We look at it continually and try and make sure that it's up to date and being enforced. And then for your second comment about actual, you know, consequences, there is a fighting system in here and we've discussed that robustly of how that would be paid, when it would have to be paid, by whom it would have to be paid. So both of those have been addressed. So thank you for your comments and just wanted to make sure that you are aware of that. And you can reach out if you have more questions. Thank you.
Is there any more input from the public? Now let's go and bring discussion back to the bench. Is there discussion on the item? Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I would like us to consider on page four, under the qualifications, item number four, just the question I asked before, but I've had a lot of dialogue since then. I know we are looking to have the ethics advisory board define active member, but if we might consider putting some parameters around that just to start with, since we'll review it every year. Defining that as an active member of a political party's caucus, auxiliary group or political party's committee. So if there's like a, like on the Democrat side, there's a Democratic Women Group, right? So it's a part of the party, but it's an auxiliary group of a party. That way, some of the concern I've seen is just folks who want to volunteer for a party or some concerned citizen that's not a part of those actual groups, but they, they like a particular candidate or someone, they'd still be eligible, if that makes sense.
So, and I'll just further that, I got some feedback from the, the Kansas Ethics Executive, Executive Director, Chair, I'm not sure it's the exact title, but he picked up on some of that. And most of it's just small, avoid confusion type stuff, but one of the, the, he picked up on that, one of the things he said is it could be interpreted too broadly. I know that's not our intent, but his comment was maybe recent partisan elected official. So if you were elected to a position within a political organization, that would exclude you for this. And that might touch on what you are pointing... And that might touch on what you are pointing to. And again, I think at this point, we're just clarifying interpretation, but I, I don't know if, if that's meets what you're concerned about or, or not.
Yeah, I don't know if we, if we would need to put it in there, but I guess for the purposes of the Ethics Advisory Board, maybe just this conversation and some direction around those specifics. That way, it's not interpreted too broadly.
Councilmember Fry.
Yeah, I concur. I think this has become too broad, and it's going to be very limiting on trying to get qualified people who's willing to do this. And so we need to have a greater pool of people. And so whether your suggestion or your suggestion, we just need to hear it back so we can get it down.
Yeah, and just for those watching, the question is about the interpretation of the wording of active, was it active?
Active member.
Active member of a political party. And active member of a political party, I think to us, was more of, of actually involved in the organization, a political organization. But the concern, if I'm reinserting Councilman Fry, let me know if I am, is more, if it's interpreted too broadly than anyone who is actively voting as claiming a party might be excluded, and that's not what we would want. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. And this is not along these lines, and, and maybe I should have waited, but one question that I just want to make sure that we address while we're having this conversation is next steps. I've had people ask me, when will this be implemented? Is there an idea of, you know, the timeframe of, of when we'll have the board put in place? And those don't have to all be, you know, addressed now from the bench, but just to reinsert confidence into the community, because it took a while for this process. So to let them know that next steps will be happening pretty quickly. And Assistant Manager, I don't know if you've had conversations about that and can give us an estimate, but just something that I know people are going to be asking about soon. So thank you.
If I may, Mayor and members of council, and Jennifer, please correct me if I'm wrong. If council adopts the policy, it becomes effective immediately. Staff will take necessary steps to support the policy, reporting requirements, for example, to the city clerk, if you will. We will also work with the mayor and council for the appointees to the Ethics Advisory Board. One thing I didn't mention during the presentation, but has been part of the discussion, staff is already working on a code of conduct, looking at social media policies and those other areas that were recommended by NLC but not covered by the current documents. So to answer your question, Councilmember Tuttle, work begins immediately.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Further discussion on the item? Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to stress that, you know, this is a next step in where we're headed. Certainly, there's been ethics policies in the past, and for whatever reason, they have not gained enough public trust. And for us to be successful with this, like the speaker said earlier, this council is going to have to continue to review it on an annual basis to make sure what's working, what's not working. It can't just be for show. It has to be something that's going to continue to improve this climate in the community. And so I, I know it doesn't really say it in here that there is annual review by this body, but it needs to be part of this ongoing discussion and, and again, figure out what's working and what's not, and keep that public trust high.
And just on top.
Does it? Am I missing that?
If I, on page, on page one, it said this should be interpreted in conjunction with the city's Code of Ethics, Conduct, Campaign Finance Policy. All four documents will be reviewed annually. So we'll look forward to having this conversation again next May.
Yeah, I guess it just, it, it doesn't really say, I guess, more specific, right? Is it at the end of the year? Is it, you know? But this is a pretty lengthy document, so apologize for missing that.
Councilmember Claycomb.
Yeah, it's all right.
The, and just kind of, with, I'm going to my eyes, see Vice Mayor, reaching to put his name on, of course, I don't want to cut him off, but I think the annual review of this is a, a really good inclusion here. As cities grow, their ethics policies usually grow, and you want to be agile to adapt to any type of changing circumstances. So that recommendation was put in, and I think will, will help, help make sure that Wichita, our policy adapts as, as we adapt. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. And again, maybe a little too soon to make this comment, but I have thought about this a great deal. We've all had this on our agendas for a year, but I just want to make sure that we recognize staff. I know that the manager's office, and especially a management fellow, put a great deal of time and effort into this document, into this process, and I think we've all learned a lot during it. And I'm exceptionally proud that we took the time to take it to our district advisory boards. We had a social media town hall. We've gotten input from constituents in, in many different ways, but staff also needs to really be recognized and praised for their work on this initiative. It's, it's a joint effort, and we've done it together, and we will look forward to the next steps of this ethics policy. So thank you to staff.
Absolutely. Thank you to staff. And I do want to just highlight the contributions that Sarah did make towards this, as our fellow really could not have, I mean, the amount of research and work gone into, I don't, I don't think we could have had this done as well as it has been done if it wasn't for the work of staff and, and for our fellow as well. Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I have one comment, and then potentially, depending on this, this question, two amendments. So I believe the mayor and I spoke some months ago about this, but for the body to consider, if we could do the annual reviews before the June 1 filing deadline, which would give us and any candidate potentially opportunity to see any changes in policies we may have before a campaign started. So like, let's say we did a modification of the campaign finance policy, which we're going to talk about later, or a code of conduct. If we did that sometime in July, that's in the middle of somebody's potential campaign, so it'd be changing midstream. But if we did it beforehand, everyone knows kind of the expectations going forward.
And I think that in our conversation, we discussed probably setting up a meeting, an annual meeting, and I don't know if it was June or February or when, but it was where this board would meet, even if there are no complaints, to go over the policy and to make recommendations on training or anything else that might, you know, might, might be prevalent in the world of municipal election, I mean, municipal ethics. So if June 1 or earlier, May or whatnot, I think that, that's a, a, a great idea, and I'm not sure if we need to put that in, in writing in, in a policy, but, but I'm not against it either. I think that that's a good idea. So let's pass some discussion on it. Councilmember Claycomb.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm fine with that. I think last time I asked the manager about putting something like that in the policy, and he didn't, he suggested that we make that outside of the policy, it's just part of our process. I would, and again, this may be getting to mention the weeds, but I would suggest that whatever adjustments we make, that those not be done in the middle of a campaign, that they be for the next cycle. And so even like right before June 1, people have filed before June 1. I know June 1 is the filing deadline, but people start filing in January sometimes and start running their campaign. So I think there's, I think we have to be careful about how we do that. And it won't affect me. I, I'm not running it. You know, I'm, after this campaign, I'm term limited, so I'm thinking about people in the future. I don't want to affect them right in the middle of their campaign, or in the, even in the beginning of their campaign. So I just want to be careful about that.
So perhaps if I'm listening, if I'm hearing correctly, the will of a annual meeting, but not, but still flexibility would, if we wanted to move forward with this, and I'm not suggesting we have to, something about an annual meeting that would take place no later than June 1, which would open it up for the first half of the year, or May 1 or, or whatnot. And, and again, the meeting is, is, would not, it would also be conducted for potential education recommendations. It would not be for necessarily to make changes to, to anything, but. In a language, the reason why I said annual meeting no later than, I think that's a reference to, we have a, there is a, a, some language in our, I think it's our ordinance or our policy about conducting a review of the city manager, and it doesn't give us a date, this is no later than this timeframe. So that was where I was thinking with, with this proposed language. Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just so I understand, so with Councilmember Claycomb's comment, maybe if there were changes, it wouldn't be effective during that campaign year, it'd be the next cycle?
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting. Thank you.
If I may, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and then Jennifer, once again, correct me if I'm wrong. Going back to Councilmember Tuttle's question earlier about the effective date of council policy, council has the authority to set the effective date, to your point, Vice Mayor Johnson. So certain policy changes, you may want to become effective immediately, others you may want to take effect at a date certain.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Do we want to add, all four documents will be reviewed annually? Do we want to add, all four documents will be viewed annually, no later than June 1? Or we just want to ensure that happens, that I'll put it in the document? Council, Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. We actually can answer your question before. I say what I was going to say. I'm fine with May 1. June 1 is the filing deadline. That just makes sure it happens early. But to Councilmember Claycomb's point, it wouldn't change the, the current year, but at least it gets it out of the way.
Right. Councilmember Claycomb.
And thank you, thank you. I, I think what Dante said in terms of we can, our council can make a decision if we make changes, that this is effective immediately, or this is effective in the future, I think that takes care of, of my concern. So I'd be okay with May 1 or June 1, whatever.
Then I'll make the motion to amend all four doc, on page 1, it would read, "All four documents will be reviewed annually, comma, no later than May 1."
Second.
Councilmember Fry.
So is this now draft 18?
Might get there.
16, okay. That hits my confusion.
And the, and I, first of all, I do want to appreciate, just to tell everyone, I know we're on the amendment, but just say I do appreciate all the more complex changes where, where, where made very, with legal's help and, and our workshop in ahead of time. So I'm hopeful that this and any future further changes to this document are going to be short and, short and sweet. So, but this one would just add that just more clarifications for the annual review would be by May 1 of each year. And it has been seconded, so let's go ahead and open a floor and vote.
To clarify, is this motion just to amend the document, or a motion to approve the entire document with that language?
Just to amend. Just to amend this. There might be, we'll keep it open for other ideas. I think Johnson said he actually had two.
That was one.
All right. So Vice Mayor Johnson.
All right. Further discussion earlier, I would like to make a motion to define on page 1, an active member of a political party as a member of a political party caucus, member of a political party auxiliary group, member of a political party's committee.
What's an auxiliary group?
Like the young Republicans or?
Yeah.
Okay. Which page is that?
That was defining the item on page 4, active member of a political party, but defining that for page 1 under definitions.
Putting it in the definitions.
I'll second. Be done consequently. Is there any discussion on that amendment?
I just, yes.
Yes, there is.
Thank you.
So Councilmember Claycomb.
Thank you. I just want to be clear. So on page 4, item 4, right, we're voting to say, may not be blah, 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 nor an active member of a political party's caucus, auxiliary group, or committee. Is that what we're voting on?
Right.
Okay.
And the rest of that is struck.
I thought, and I could be wrong.
Or active member of any partisan or non-person political club or organization. Is that part struck?
That wasn't a part of my motion, but I'm not opposed to it.
And I thought he was making a definition of what politically active. So it wasn't so much striking or striking.
Yeah, I was just defining that piece so we could put it on definitions on page 1. So that way, it's defined specifically.
Putting pretty much borders around what that is to, that that isn't.
So you're adding a definition on page 1?
Of that. So the question has been even at that, what does active member of a political party mean?
Oh, of the party.
So I wanted to make sure we define that on page 1.
And what is that definition?
So it would be a member of a political party caucus, member of a political party auxiliary group, or a member of a political party's committee.
So we're putting that on page 1 instead of page 4? Is that what you're?
We're just defining it on page 1.
So it'd be a new definition on page 1?
Yeah, be a new definition.
So the, the paragraph on page 4 would remain the same. It's just now active member of a political party would have the definition, and thus, I think, settle the concerns that it might be seen too broadly or interpreted too broadly, which would limit.
It gives some parameters for future discussion, so that way, we're looking at those specific things. Anyone outside of that would be eligible to get appointed.
Vice Mayor, and I can't push my button to speak, so it seems like we're just having a conversation, but that's okay. But you had mentioned one, a little bit ago, a recent partisan elected official you wanted on page 4?
That was the mayor.
That was the mayor that said that.
Okay, my bad. Somebody said it. Is, is that going anywhere, or is that, was that just a recommendation, and now we're not going for it?
I think there's an alternative.
Okay, so I'll just cross it out. I just want to make sure I'm getting it right. Thank you.
Of course. And Councilmember Johnson's amendment actually more clearly, I think, addresses what the language I was suggesting in that discussion as well, so it'd be redundant, I wouldn't talk with that again, if this motion does pass. So again, Councilmember, did anybody have other discussion on this?
I'm still, okay. Just to be clear what we're voting on, we are voting on leaving item 4 on page 4 as is, adding the definition of active member political party, auxili- caucuses, auxiliary groups, or committees on page 1. Okay, thank you. And we're leaving the, or active member of any partisan or non-partisan political club or organization, we're leaving that in there for now.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
I said I was okay with it, but I didn't know if you wanted to make a friendly amendment or not, because it covers that.
We could come back to that, because this is the, what we're voting on now is just to add a definition to page 1.
Yeah, and that's my interpretation. It puts parameters on how section 4 would be interpreted, so that gets back to, I think, Councilmember Fry's concern that we might be too narrow with this definition if it was taken the, the most, most broadly possible. So putting a yard sign up, we're going to count, but being an active chair of a caucus would. Is there any other discussion on this amendment? And again, it's to add this definition clarity. There is none, and clerk has opened the roll, members can ask to vote.
Mayor, was there a second on that?
Yes, I seconded it.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry.
All right, that motion does pass, or that amendment does pass. Further discussion?
So now if we go back to item 4, is there a motion on that?
There has not been a motion on item 4. There has not been a motion on item four. The motion, the previous amendment affects item four.
Right.
With the interpretation, but that paragraph is still left as is at this point.
So with that, on item four, uh, again, that last part of that sentence, "An active member of any partisan or nonpartisan political club or organization," to me feels very limiting and needs to be removed. And so I would, especially now that we've added this specific language about the political party, that I think that merits removing that. And so that would be my motion to remove that section from item four.
So we want, "Elected, may not be an elected or appointed member of any local, state, or national committee of any political party, nor an active member of a political party or active member of any partisan or nonpartisan political club or organization."
So my motion was to remove that last section, "Active member of any partisan or nonpartisan political club or organization," to strike that.
The problem, and, and I'm just gonna, I know I was gonna second it, but my thought is if we strike active member of any partisan or nonpartisan political club or organization, then we just added a definition and now we don't have the term to define.
No, I disagree.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Frye meant, so we have, um, "Nor an active member of a political party." After that would be struck because the active member of a political party was defined on page one with the last amendment.
Yes, so, so the definition was about political party. So this would allow an active member of a partisan or nonpartisan political club or organization? And this would allow, so like, Americans Prosperity, someone who's active in that could now be on this, but a member of the Democratic Party who's active couldn't be. Is that how that would?
No, 'cause it says "may not be" an active member of any partisan, so then they couldn't be.
But, like, for example, Americans Prosperity is not a political party. It's a, it's a nonpartisan organization that participates in politics. So if we struck this last line with that, now open it up to, um, I guess, people who, who, who are active in the political arena, active in, uh, what some would assume campaigning, but, but not technically a political party. And thus do we, do we wind up with any, any concerns there? That would be my concern with, with, with this, this amendment. Councilmember Clay Combs?
I, and I understand the dilemma here. Is there a way for us? I think what I'm hearing is that if we could look at a way of, it's too broad. If we could find a way of tightening up, the example you gave makes this perfectly clear, but I could imagine that there would be some group that we might, that someone might think was a political club and another might not think it was a political club. Does that make sense? I hate to give an example because I don't wanna put, uh, dispersions on any organization, but.
So, and I think the example would be, I could be wrong, but it would be to participate in politics would be a political club. Uh, to participate in the, um, which is different than, that's technically a, yeah, so to participate in politics, and, and I think that there are organizations that are technically nonpartisan political clubs, which were in, in this, which would insinuate that there was a, there was a particular structure. My thought is that, um, that would be different than other educational organizations perhaps. I guess, uh, Vice Mayor Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, would it clear it up to say member of a political advocacy group or organization? That way it's not singling out one particular one, but trying to keep away just from politics in general.
And I think that's the goal of this line, and I'm not sure if it truly needs to be. It was gonna really be a problem, but the goal is to not just focus on, I think, political identity, but also ideology. You know, so I think that it's the, the, the goal is to have a, a neutral perspective, uh, presented, or someone who would be neutral and, and thus, that was the, as neutral as possible. That was the, uh, the goal of this section, so. Councilmember Clay Combs?
I think what we may be getting into though is if we support an organization, then we're okay with them being on there, and if we don't support them, we're not okay. Because I could give, I do think of an example. This morning we had the Tobacco Free Wichita organization here. They're an advocacy group, nonpartisan. Um, I'm, I'm like Councilmember Frye wondering if I could not appoint someone from, that, that is active in that organization based on this qualification statement. And I might want to. I don't know if I, I'm not saying I do or don't, but I'm just saying, you know, that's a, a group that's well-known that I agree with their policies, would they be, you know, stricken from being, being a part of, being appointed?
I think it would depend on if they had a policy or political agenda and if they participated in campaigning. If you have a policy agenda, I think.
Right, they do have a policy agenda, yes. It's educational and advi- and, and advocacy group. So I don't know. I, it just seems overly broad right now.
So, let's talk about examples then. Let's, 'cause I'm still trying to get my head wrapped around. I think the, the idea of the, um, anti-tobacco organization, or even on the other side of pro-tobacco organization, does that count as, as, um, an active member of any partisan or nonpartisan political club or organization? And thus exclude, or exclude these folks from being on the committee? While also we know that there are, uh, political PACs, political nonprofits, 501(c)(4)'s, and so on, are very heavily active in campaigning. And I think the interpretation is to exclude campaign, um, type, uh, or partisan-type organizations because we want people who won't come in with an agenda be serving. So I, that's a, that's just my recap on this. Let's, let's have a discussion about it though. Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, this is very specific, but, um, would it be easier to say a nonpartisan 501(c)(4) political group?
That would be the?
Because the Tobacco Free Wichita, I believe, is a c3. So they're, they're advocacy, but it's, it's, by law, c3's can't really advocate too much, um, with the majority of their funds. It's just all about education.
Adding an exception for c3's might actually, I mean, now we're discussing.
I also didn't mean to get us into this many weeds this morning, but.
I mean, well, this is one of the reasons why we're gonna be advising this, right? Uh, or revising this yearly to see if there is any concern. I have no one who, who I'd be appointing who represents a political club, so I'm not, not too concerned with this. But the, but I think clarity is important, so. Uh, Councilmember Tuttle?
And this may be editorializing a little bit and, and I apologize for that, but, uh, I think the intent, and tell me if I'm wrong, is that we don't want political affiliations. And I'll just say Republican, Democrat, whatever. But now we're saying we don't want community members who are engaged in organizations, what they're passionate about. And that's exactly what we want people to do in this community. So I, I think that by saying a five, I mean, I don't even know if I know someone who isn't a part of a 501(c)(3) in some capacity. I mean, they may not be the chair, but they're engaged and, and active in their community in some way. So I, I just am a little cautious of that and I appreciate Vice Mayor doing a little research here. Quitting, come up with some language, but I think if we start getting that far in the weeds, that we're gonna limit it so much that I don't even know if we'll find human beings who could actually be appointed for this role. So, again, editorializing a little bit, but, but just sharing my concerns.
So I, I wanna make it clear, there is nothing in this that would stop someone who works for a 501(c)(3), for a nonprofit, for a community organization, anything from being appointed, unless that person is an active member of a political club or organization, whether it's partisan or not. Uh, this part here was taken from, I think, uh, either Tulsa's, um, ordinance or maybe Kansas City, uh, Kansas ordinance. So if all is the subjectable standard, that, uh, and we might need to lean towards, uh, maybe some of their rulings to see how they're exactly determining this. But I, I, I think that, yeah, it's finding that balance of ensuring that, 'cause we have political organizations that are technically non, um, non, uh, partisan. They're not associated with one of the major parties officially, but they are very influential and in many cases more influential than some of the political parties. Uh, do we want ideological representation on this board? Would you, or, or, or not? 'Cause I think that was the purpose of not having a political party. It was the concern about ideology and, um, bias and, and so on. Uh, so that's what this is attempting to, to, to get to.
And, and just to clarify, I know that, that as written draft sixteen that we have right now, version sixteen, didn't, didn't mention 501(c)(3) or 501(c)(4), but that was just discussed as an option and that's why I just raised a concern.
Councilmember Sorillo?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, uh, maybe narrow this down a little bit. I would, I would be happy with, I, I agree with Councilmember Frye first off that I believe the last part needs to be struck. I would, I would be comfortable if number four said, "May not be an elected, appointed, or active member of any local, state, or national political committee or political party." Period.
Councilmember, Member Frye?
Thank you. Yeah, I think the, the issue I'm having with, um, the last part of act of number four is the definition of active member. What is that?
We defined, we defined active.
No?
Excuse me, we gotta stick to the procedure and rules of the bench. So if, if a member does wanna jump in and, um, make a comment, please, please put your name on the board. Councilmember Frye, you, you retain the floor.
Okay, 'cause we defined active member of the political party, but not what it means for active member of a partisan or nonpartisan political club or organization. And where is that limit? Is it someone who makes a donation to the party, someone who puts up a yard sign? Is that defined as an active member? So that's where this becomes way too broad because you don't know what that definition, definition is. So that's why I'm asking it be struck. And I like your amendment, Councilmember Sorillo, if that's a friendly amendment.
It's a friendly amendment.
It's my motion.
There's an amendment being discussed. Amendment's not on the floor, it hasn't been seconded. So we're still in discussion. Um, Councilmember Clay Combs?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that there is something else that adds, um, protection to this and sometimes we don't use it. But it does say in membership, "The Ethics Advisory Board has seven members. Each council member and the mayor shall have one appointment, which requires approval by the majority of the council." And if someone truly believed that another appointee should not be appointed, that is the place. Like I said, we don't typically use that, but we could. So by taking out this broad, like you're suggesting, Councilmember Frye, or the amendment by Councilmember Sorillo, this approval process could help with some of the concerns, I think, that the mayor and vice mayor have.
Councilmember Sorillo?
I would, I would move that we make number four say, "May not be unelected, appointed, or active member of any local, state, or national political committee or political party."
So with, um, with the mayor away for a second, I do not believe you could make that motion because Councilmember Frye has a motion on the.
Oh.
But there was, so there was never a second, so you can make a substitute motion.
That's correct. There was no second.
I apologize.
So just, it's a second.
You can make a substitute motion.
Then can I be refreshed of Councilmember Frye's motion?
No, you can, you can make a substitute motion.
I'm, I'm not sure what your motion was.
Just strike that last segment of that.
So we have a discussion of a potential motion, and that's what we're doing right now. A motion isn't a motion until, uh, it is stated clearly and then it's seconded. So right now we're discussing what could be a potential motion. We're not discussing a motion because it hasn't been seconded. If that helps. I think right now we're discussing more of a, an issue with section four. If there is a motion, then we'll, we'll get to that. Vice Mayor Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Just to clear it up before I refer back to Councilmember Sorillo. So Councilmember Frye had a motion, was not seconded. Councilmember Sorillo then made a motion. Um, so I wrongly told him that he couldn't make that motion because I wasn't aware that Councilmember Frye didn't have a second. So Councilmember Sorillo was actually making a motion since, um, Councilmember Frye's motion was not seconded.
And what was the motion? Who raised the motion?
I move that number four say, "May not be unelected, appointed, or active member of any local, state, or national political committee or political party."
And it's to strike the rest of it?
That's correct.
Is there a second? See, no second. Back on the original discussion.
I think, um, I'm sorry.
Next, uh, Councilmember Tuttle?
Thank you. I, again, my, my, and I, and I appreciate Councilmember Sorillo trying to, to get us where we're, we're, we're all going. We're just trying to wordsmith it a little bit, but saying that, again, a community member who we appoint can't be part of a political party, I mean, you know, a- again, that's kind of the same thing about like not asking, you want people who aren't engaged in the community. I mean, most people have some sort of political affiliation, I hope, or are aware, maybe or maybe not. But that was my only angst with it, so I think we're getting closer and, and thank you for offering that as a substitute motion. But, um, that, that was my concern and why I wasn't, um, willing to second at this point.
Further discussion? All right, well, there are no motions on the table or amendments on the table. I think the discussion is still about, uh, over, the overall document on, um, how be interpreted. To be honest, I, I'm not sure if, if the current language needs cleaning at this point or not. But if not, I, I have another, are you? Vice Mayor Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I was just gonna say, um, I am okay with the definition that we did. I'm also okay with, um, just reviewing in a year, kinda seeing where the appointments go now about these concerns, uh, mainly because it's hard to, I guess, get that deep into the weeds right now. I, I understand what my colleagues are getting at with the removal of that second piece, but your point I get as well. So trying to get specific enough to get where we're targeting, um, but not limit public participation right now.
And I, and I will, uh, just, just point out that any member to this board has to be approved by all of us so that if there is any, I guess, uh, uh, objectable. so that if there is any, I guess, uh, uh, objectable concerns, we, we can deal with that as, as we see. So, I, that's one of the reasons why I'm not too worried about it. So, I have a, I guess, we, we can get back to the main document. Um, I have a, is there any other discussion on this? If not, I'm gonna, to somewhat of a, what this currently is, and I'll ask Legal for clarification, and perhaps guidance on this, is this, this document will go into our Wichita council policy, as number thirty-eight would be the motion. So, the current ethics policy will still stand in the ordinance, uh, and as the, the two are not in conflict. And just confirmation of that.
I mean, as it turns out, I think that will be there to be a, a helpful transition until these policies are, and the board's in place, and, and staff has taken all necessary actions, um, that can be considered, whether repeal is necessary, appropriate at the, at the time that, that, um, things look like we're ready to go on, on the new council policy.
Actually, really, and, and to be honest, I, I will put, um, my, my opinion in for a, a minute, um, as previous councilmembers had editorialized for a moment. I, I think the, the two actually complement each other. My, uh, hope would be that as we have in page one, where we reference, uh, other documents that we hope to work on, where we use the language, uh, should be interpreted in conjunction with. Uh, I was going to, to just bring this up, and then maybe make a motion, that we would, uh, add a line to the ordinance, uh, section two zero four zero five zero, that would say, "This section should be interpreted in conjunction with the city council's policy number thirty-eight." And what that would do is link the two, and thus keep us, um, keep, keep us, uh, in a similar, um, I guess, approach, as we, we are in this as well, where it's also linking the other documents.
If, if you're asking, I think that would need some further consideration, really compare, um, you know, the existing ordinance, um, to make sure that that's, that's direction you want to continue.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'd, I'd second it for the discussion, because I, I didn't know, so, second. But I didn't know, do we need that ordinance today to, to review that, to then change that, or? I'm not sure.
I don't think any ac- action is needed today on that ordinance. I think it's okay to, to leave it until we, um, get some, some details and processes completed on the policy.
Would, would that be so?
That's not the question. The question is, would we need the ordinance on the table to amend that ordinance?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
Well, your, your response was more of an opinion. Uh, what, what the question was, if we wanted to link the ordinance to this, so that they are in conjunction, interpreting in conjunction, is it out of order to do so without the ordinance on the table currently, is I think the question.
Yeah, we would need to draft a, um, a repeal ordinance, and we don't have that ready to get to. So, it's really not something we're prepared to recommend today, to, to take action on that ordinance.
What would need to be repealed?
Or to, to link it, to amend the ordinance, or to incorporate it into the policy? Are you suggesting just incorporate it into this policy?
So, my, my suggestion would have been to just add the line that is taken from page one of this policy, but slightly changed, to the current ordinance of, of, um, ethics, that just says, "This section should be interpreted in conjunction with the city council's policy number thirty-eight." So, it would just connect the two.
So, that would be amending the current ordinance?
Yes.
And I'm, I would, it'd be my opinion that we're not prepared to do that today without a, a draft document and vetting of the, you know, that, that it needs to be drafted, um, and it would need to be put on first reading, and then, um, so it's my position that we're not prepared to do that at this time.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Claycomb.
I think Jennifer answered my question, but I also would not be in favor of linking those today. I'd like, I'd need to go back and look at that ordinance. I think it has things in it that we have not defined now. And I, and my, from the very beginning, my thought was that this ordinance, this new council policy would replace that one. So, I would need some time to go back and study that before I'd be prepared to vote.
Okay. And I think it's a good point, is, is do we want this to replace the old one, or do it be added? As we know now, it's not in conflict, so I think Legal's, um, advice is to cede with this, and then it would be a transition, or weeping in. Um, Councilmember Johnson.
I'll go ahead, Jennifer.
And I would just add, technically, under the ordinance, I mean, it's, it's the set in ordinance that we need to draft an ordinance for your review, um, and I need to sign off. I don't think it's something we can do just on a motion.
Thanks. Um, so, I was gonna say, I'm, I'm not, um, necessarily opposed to what the mayor said, but like Councilmember Claycomb, I thought, um, we would do kind of policy now, but this actual wording would be ordinance later. Or, I, I just thought it'd be a little more, 'cause the ordinance was kind of the issue we had to begin with. So, wanted to make sure that in ordinance, there was some stronger wording, and that was kind of the work we were doing. So, I knew policy was what we had to do now, but I thought that would change later, and the work of the actual ordinance would get drafted, and maybe come back to council at some point.
And, and my understanding, maybe Legal can give us some clarity on this, is they hold the same weight, that it just seemed more appropriate to be in policy than ordinance. Uh, so, I, I could default to Legal to, I guess, give a better understanding of why this is in number thirty-eight and, and council policy opposed to being in the ordinance.
What I can say is that, that the existing ordinance was drafted more as a policy, and probably would have bet, best been placed as a council policy, based on the way it was drafted. It really doesn't have the typical form of an ordinance. It's more of a, a policy statement.
And, and just to add to that, and I could be wrong, um, when reviewing our ordinances earlier this year, particularly when it came to make a mask mandates and so on, we learned, uh, that an ordinance needs to have a, uh, a, a, a penalty drafted in it as well. And our current ethics policy in ordinance is the only, um, ordinance that really didn't have a direct financial penalty attached. And there was some discussion back then, and I'm thinking about that, I think, might actually, uh, uh, sustain the, the thought that that would have been better in policy to begin with. Uh, I could be wrong.
Yes and no. Not all ordinances have a, have a penalty provision, because they're not all an enforceable, um, act. Some ordinances are just creating a, a committee, for, for example. But, um, I think, um, what we're doing today is best suited for a council policy. If you look at other existing council policies, travel expense, zoning, um, hearing procedures, uh, naming of facilities, this seems to sit, to fit best as a council policy.
And, and just for clarification, putting this in council policy in no way weakens it opposed to if it was in ordinance, as far as how it's applied?
Both can be adopted, amended, modified by council at your choice, so I don't think it weakens it.
Well, I, I think, I think the council's discussion on that, I will agree that we can relook at adding that line, or how to, um, connect or coordinate the two. I think that the both being there means that they will be coordinated. So, I, I'm comfortable moving forward with the document as it is.
If I may, Mayor, um, staff's going to come back with a code of conduct, discussion about social media policies. I think there's an opportunity, then, for the council and staff to discuss the relationship between those policies and the ordinance, and make a decision as to, uh, what direction council would like to follow.
And just for clarification, then, at the point when this is adopted and put into action, if the ordinance is also, uh, still exactly like it is, in practice, these two will be taken in, in, in conjunction with each other. The, one will eliminate the other, since it's not in conflict, these relatively are. We, we won't have unintended consequences with them both being on the books, will we?
Um, Mayor, based on what I've heard Jennifer say, the, the council policy thirty-eight, if adopted, and the existing city ordinance would work, uh, in a complementary fashion, they would support each other, and they don't conflict with each other.
Very good. Any further discussion? Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, again, I'm fine with this as is. My only technical piece is, I know that Dante, you said you all have been working on being ready for this. If we voted, and this was effective immediately, um, how does that impact reporting? Do we have all of that set up to, to start, or does that need to be effective like June one?
Vice Mayor Johnson, as far as the reporting requirements, the annual requirements, I think the adoption of council policy eight would, thirty-eight would provide staff the necessary direction to develop processes, procedures, and forms to support, um, uh, the council policy. It would also allow the council the opportunity to begin forming the Ethics Advisory Board. Um, so I don't think, um, the requirements or the dependencies the staff has to deliver needs to be in place prior to the council policy becoming effective.
Okay. My, my only concern, 'cause I, I was, this was my concern early. I wanna make sure I go above and beyond on not being unethical. And as we're looking at that hundred and fifty dollar limit, right, I've got three lunches this week. So, am I keeping track? Now, are we putting that into smart sheet, or do we need to make this effective like June, where all of that's set up, so once it's done, now we can start plugging that in?
My understanding is lunches are excluded. It's unless they gave you gifts during the lunches. Unless they showered you with, with gifts.
I was thinking a ham sandwich, but, um... Yeah, you're right.
Further discussion? No further discussion, and I will go ahead and make the motion to set, accept staff's recommended action, that the city council adopt the Code of Ethics for the mayor, city council, and advisory board members of the city of Wichita as council policy number thirty-eight. I see.
I will second, but.
Motion's are made and seconded, but we also have Councilmember Frye to speak to the motion.
Uh, no, thank you. I, just a clarification, I had to take a quick break. Was there a motion from Councilmember Sorillo that was on the floor, and?
Yes. Uh, there was a motion, and it, uh...
And you already? Okay.
And it didn't have a second.
Okay, so it died, and you already addressed that?
Yes.
I was, like I said, I was on break, so.
So, then the new motion on the floor is to pass this through as council policy number thirty-eight, and it's been seconded. Clerk, open the roll. Members cast the vote. With the result of six yeas to zero nays, that motion does pass. The item is hereby adopted. Madam Clerk.
Zone twenty twenty-one dash three and CON twenty twenty-one dash four. City zone change from general commercial on zero point five acre to general industrial, and a conditional use to allow for the storage of wrecked, wrecked vehicles and an impound lot on one point seven one acres, generally located three hundred and fifty feet of North Broadway and a hundred and fifty feet south of East Twenty-Ninth Street North, between North Market and Park Place.
Welcome, Sarah.
Good morning. Scott Wadele from the Planning Department. Just wanna point out, I think we win the day for the longest agenda item title again.
That's pretty good.
This, um, this case is before you. Uh, it is a, there's a request for a zone change from GC, General Commercial, to GI, General Industrial, and a conditional use to allow for the storage of wrecked vehicles and an impound lot. And the reason why it's before you on the non-consent agenda is because it has been protested by property owners within the protest area. The site is one point seven acres in size, is located near Twenty-Ninth Street and Market Street. Approximately two-thirds of the site, the northern portion, is zone GI Industrial, General Industrial. Approximately one-third of the site, the southern portion, is zone GC, General Commercial. The applicant is applying to rezone the GC portion of GI, so that they can apply for a conditional use for the entire site. Having the whole site zone GI allows the, for the conditional use for wrecking and salvage yard. In terms of the surrounding properties, property to the north is zone GI, and is developed with buildings and in use for an auction business. You can see it here on the aerial. Property to the east is zone GC, and developed as a shopping center. Property to the south is zone B multifamily, and developed with single-family homes. Property to the west is zone GC, and developed with a warehouse and in use for an auction business and related storage. The planning commission, the public hearing for this item was held at the April twenty-second Planning Commission meeting. The commission voted ten to two to approve the request for the zone change to GI Industrial, subject to a protective overlay and a conditional use permit, subject to additional conditions. The protective overlay limits the use of the entire site to uses allowed in GC zoning, plus the operation of a vehicle impound lot and wrecked storage, uh, and wrecked vehicle storage. The additional conditions applied to the conditional use included the following requirements: that the conditional use is limited to impound and wrecked vehicle storage. It does not allow dismantling of vehicles and/or salvage of parts. Screening along the south property line, which should be in the, would be in the form of an eight-foot solid screening wall, and one and a half times the required landscaping. That the development would be in accordance with an updated site plan and landscape plan. That wrecked or impounded vehicles should not be stacked. There are additional conditions which are detailed in the staff report. At the public hearing, members of the public spoke in opposition to the application. Objections included an increase in graffiti, concerns of additional junk vehicles, and the negative impact to retail sales in the area. On March first, the District Advisory Board Six voted to approve the proposed zoning change and conditional use per staff comments, the same as the Planning Commission action. In terms of protests, valid protest petitions totaling eighty-nine point nine percent of the protest area have been received for this case. This exceeds the state's threshold of twenty percent, and a supermajority of the council, six of seven votes, are required in order to approve the rezoning and the conditional use. Recommended actions? It is recommended that the city council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission, approve the requested zone change with a protective overlay, approve the conditional use for the wrecking and salvage operation, place the ordinance on the first reading, and authorize the necessary signatures. Again, this action requires six of seven votes. Alternatives include the following: the council can deny the requested zone change and conditional use with five of seven votes. The city council can also return the case to the Planning Commission with a simple majority. And I'll go through some of the slides with photos and other graphics. So, here's the aerial. You can see the site located there, approximately Twenty-Ninth and Market Street. Here's the zoning. You can see that the property is split between two zoning districts. Here's, uh, a graphic showing where they're requesting the zone change in the southern portion of the property and the conditional use for the entire property. This is the site relative to other zoning districts in the area. You can see that it's residential to the south, general commercial to the east, and a mix of industrial and residential to the north and the west. Uh, this is the future land use, uh, concept map from the comprehensive plan. You can see that it's a mix, shows a mix of commercial, industrial, and residential in the area. Here's a map of the protests that were received. And with that, oh, additional photos. Here's a photo of the site, uh, quite a bit of snow, so you can tell it's been a little while. So, this is the, uh, the structure that's on the property, is that gray warehouse building on the right. So, the property is currently fenced in. You can see the wooden fence along the south perimeter. This is the property to the east, the shopping center. This is looking north along Park Place. This, again, is the structure that's currently on the site. This is looking to the west, at the auction and storage facility. This is, again, looking at the site with the warehouse in the middle, and again, looking to the west. And this is looking at the, uh, pro- subject property from the east, looking west. And this is the southern portion of the subject site. Again, the property to the west, and there's the aerial. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? Just a question for Legal. This doesn't go out as public opinion, because it already had its public opinion. Is that correct?
No, no, it does not, unless the council policy is waived, and that would take a motion and a second.
I think it's a motion for that, so we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there a discussion on this item? Now I defer the floor to Councilmember Claycomb, as this resides in District Six.
Thank you. This is a, kind of a tough case. If you look at the pictures that Scott showed, there is a lot of mixed use in this area. The area though, south of this, which we had one picture of, but wasn't as clear as if you are there, it is truly single-family houses. And so, and this would have brought right to this salvage yard. So it's a really tough transition from SF five, even though it's not zoned SF five, but single-family homes, right to a, to a salvage yard. So based on the almost ninety percent protest and that this doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood, I move city council deny the zone change and conditional use.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk open to roll, members cast the vote. Result of five yeas with Councilmember Frye voting nay, motion does pass.
PUD twenty twenty-one dash two, city zone change from single-family residential and limited commercial to PUD planned unit development to create the Buffalo Grove PUD number eighty-three, generally located on the east side of South Hundred and Twenty-seventh Street East and north of East Pawnee Road.
Good morning. Scott Wadele again from the Planning Department. This item is a request for a rezoning from SF five, single-family residential and LC Limited Commercial, which you can see here on the slide, to PUD planned unit development, which is custom zoning. The item before, is before you is a non-consent item because it has been protested by property owners in the protest area. The site is nineteen point three acres in size and is generally located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Pawnee Road and Hundred and Twenty-seventh Street. The PUD has been requested in order to allow for the development of the site with a mixture of residential homes, including twin homes and quad homes with alleyways and open space. The PUD establishes a number of requirements and standards, including the following elements: density, which is limited to fourteen point five dwelling units per acre; setbacks, which are customized to accommodate the desired development pattern; architectural controls to achieve a cohesive look at the development; landscaping and screening, which will be required along the east and north boundaries and are proposed to be landscaping to achieve that; lighting standards; parking, each unit shall have a minimum of two off-street parking spaces; signage to be consistent with Wichita sign code. The property to the north is zoned SF five and is vacant. Property further to the north is single-family residences, you can see the outline of those on, on the plat map here. Property to the east is zoned SF five and developed as a court, as a golf course. Property to the south is zoned LC Limited Commercial and SF twenty and is undeveloped agricultural land. Property to the west is zoned TF three and LC. The TF three properties are developed with duplexes, the LC land is undeveloped. Property to the southwest of the intersection is zoned LC and SF five, the LC land is undeveloped, the SF five land is southeast high. On April eighth of this year, the public hearing was held at the Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission voted to recommend approval, subject to staff comments, nine to, nine to zero. Members of the public spoke in opposition to this application. The opposition comments would generally stated concerns that the proposed use was incompatible with single-family residences. On April twelfth, DAB two recommended approval, ten to zero. No one spoke in opposition to the application at that meeting. Multiple protests have been received for this case, many of them were outside the protest area. I will go to that map so you can see them. Valid protest petitions received, received totaled seven point seven two percent of the protest area. The twenty percent threshold was not met, and the case can be approved by a simple majority. So the recommended action, it is recommended the city council adopt the findings of the MAPC, approve the requested zone change, and place the ordinance on the first reading, approve the necessary signatures, and instruct the clerk to publish the ordinance after approval of the second reading, on the second reading. Alternatives are to return the item to the planning commission, which would require a simple majority, or to deny the application, which would require a five of seven vote to overturn the planning commission recommendation. And with that, I'll go through the slides and photos and then stand for any questions. So again, here is the site currently undeveloped. Here's the zoning for the area, you can see the SF five zoning in white, the LC in red, TF three in the yellow. You can see that unincorporated Cedric County is located across the street to the south. Here's the twenty thirty-five Wichita future growth concept map, identifying this as residential and employment mix. Here's the proposed layout of the property. Here's an illustration showing the twin homes and the quad homes, along with the alleyways that are proposed as part of the development, roadways, on-street parking. Here's the map showing the protests that were received. You can see the red area, which is the, the protests that were received within the protest area, blue indicating the protests that were received outside of the protest area. And the calculation area, the protest area, is a little bit different because it's two hundred feet in distance in the city and one thousand feet once you hit the unincorporated county line. Here are photos of the site. This is looking west at the duplexes. This is looking south and west, you can see the high school in the distance. Again, the duplexes across the street, there's the aerial. I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? No questions, we'll open up to discussion, is there a discussion? If no discussion, then I will recognize Councilmember Tuttle, as she resides in, as this resides in District Two.
Thank you. I did have two residents who reached out to me who had concerns and, and, you know, they were worried about more density, more traffic, potentially more crime, and so we, we had some robust conversations and I, and I appreciate them reaching out to me. But based on the fact that the petition was seven point seven two percent and didn't reach the twenty percent threshold, and that it was unanimous at the MAPC and the District Advisory Board for District Two, I am going to move that the city council adopt the findings of MAPC, approve the requested zone change, and place the ordinance on first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval of second reading.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Clerk open to roll, members cast the vote. Result of six yeas, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Airport Hotel LLC concession and lease agreement, Wichita Dwight D Eisenhower National Airport.
All considered?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Councilmember Scott Rigby, City Manager's Office. Today, we're here to discuss the item that came before originally to city council or to the airport authority back on April twentieth. This is for a development agreement with Hotel, Airport Hotel LLC and the Wichita Dwight D Eisenhower Airport. After the April twentieth meeting, one of us deferred, staff continued to do its final vetting of the applicants. And in the course of that, we learned that there was additional entities that were not disclosed in the vetting process. Since that time, we have finished that vetting process, and through that vetting process, we have found additional companies that were not listed and additional liens, business, of those business interests, as well as outstanding final, financial liabilities and pending litigation. As you know, a complete vetting process requires a complete and full disclosure by the applicant and/or for us to do a full disclosure of, a full vetting. In light of that incomplete information and outstanding liens and pending litigation, it is staff's recommendation not to proceed with the agreement with Airport Hotel LLC concessions at this time. Staff is prepared to answer any questions.
So any questions of staff? Is there any input from the public? Is there any discussion at the bench? Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Scott, I appreciate you and the manager's office doing the additional work in, in vetting and, and finding all of this out. And I appreciate, although Bob's not here, the conversations we've had about future work around this, so just wanted to say thank you for the additional work.
Thanks. Councilmember Frye?
I echo the Vice Mayor's comments, and I would also like to let our development community know that do not take this as a sign that we're not open for business. We still need to develop our airport to its fullest capability, and don't let this be a bump in the road. We're, we're still open for business, we want to hear ideas and proposals, so.
Absolutely.
Further discussion from the bench? See none. With that, I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action that the Wichita Airport Authority not approve the proposed agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Clerk open to roll. Result of six yeas to zero nays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember appointments and comments?
Let's open up for appointments first. I would like to appoint Elma Anne Jones to the Cedric County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Is there any other appointments? See none. I'm getting kind of, kind of hungry. Do I need a second for those appointments? I do, right? Okay. Is there a second for the motion to, for this one appointment?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Clerk open to roll, members cast the vote. Result of six yeas to zero nays, that motion does pass. Back on the announcements, other announcements for the good of the body? Councilmember Tuttle?
Thank you. Just try to get it so I can get to it because I'm short. I did want to just point out that we learned yesterday that our City of Wichita Park and Rec Department was named as the finalist for the American Academy for Park and Recreation Administration and the National Recreation and Park Association. They're one of the finalists, I think it's the first time I read in fifty-four years that they have been a finalist for this prestigious award, and that they should be notified via the conference for the National Recreation and Park Association in September. So we'll be keeping our fingers crossed, but also thanking our Park and Rec Department, who just does an exceptional job. And during COVID, I was really interested and excited in seeing some of the innovative programs they did to make sure that our community could utilize our park and rec system at a time when they most needed it. Just another comment as well is that I was asked to join the Greater Wichita Area Veterans Advocacy Board, and I had my first meeting with the group yesterday just to get up to speed, and they did mention to me that it's National Military Appreciation Month. And so if you see a member of the military or a veteran, I know that Councilmember Cirillo's father's a veteran, I believe, right? A chance to just thank our men and women who serve our country so well and, and let them know that we appreciate their service and sacrifice, as well as their family's service and sacrifice. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. It's only fitting, it was windy this weekend, today is opening day, go wind surge.
It's tough to top, but if anyone wanted to try? See none. With that, I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, clerk open to roll. Result of six yeas to zero nays, that motion does pass, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.